Bueno, me gustaría saludar a nuestros dictadarios. Empecé con el frente de la sala. Miembro del Consejo de Waterfield, miembro del Consejo de Cordero, Comisionado Dickerson, eh, Robert Dickerson, Michael Cordero, perdón por el primer nombre. Comisionado Tom López. Comisionado Mirabelle Hernández está aquí, pero no está sentada ahí. Director de Comunidad de Desarrollo, Chen Ying. Oh, Comisionado Kelly White O'Neil está aquí. Por favor, denle un aplauso a ellos. Perfecto tiempo, Comisionado Hernández. Conmigo esta noche, mi compañero en crimen es Frank Albro. Es senador, senador de planificación con el departamento de Comunidad de Desarrollo. Es el arquitecto maestro de la propuesta de ordenanza. Oh, y por último, introducción, al menos, nuestro alcalde, Alex Adino. Justo entró. Está bien aplaudirla también. La ordenanza se lanzará mañana al público cuando la agenda de la Comisión de Planificación para el 21 de noviembre salga a las 3 en la tarde.
En la tarde.
En la tarde. Se estará disponible en el sitio web, puedes descargarlo ahora. Quiero hablarles un poco de que la ordenanza es una ordenanza comprensiva que modifica bastante de uno de los capítulos, el capítulo 1235 sobre permisos de uso. La razón por la comprensividad es porque el personal ya estaba en el proceso de hacer una revisión sustancial de ese capítulo para otros propósitos. Y fue casi terminado cuando la necesidad de traer una enmienda de ordenanza para el H2A Housing fue incluida en ese capítulo. Así que esta noche, en cambio, vamos a enfocarnos solo en las partes que están relacionadas específicamente con el hogar de los empleados. Pero la completa ordenanza toca muchos otros temas que son importantes, pero no son importantes por la razón principal que estamos aquí. Así que preparé un PowerPoint, uno de mis famosos PowerPoints. Asegúrese de mantenerme en camino. Oh, este es el que tiene el mal. Lo siento, James. Todos hemos visto este, creo. Lo siento por eso. Dije que este era el que tenía, y no tenía. Sí, sí, ese es el que tenía. Sí, está bien, ese es el que tenía. Bien. El Código Municipal de la Ciudad de Santa María consiste en doce capítulos, y el título 12 es el que trata del zonaje. Obviamente cubre un montón de otras cosas. ¿Qué es el zonaje? El zonaje es la separación de la municipalidad en distritos y la regulación de los edificios y estructuras según su construcción. Y este es el lenguaje clave para nosotros, la naturaleza y extensión de su uso y la naturaleza y extensión de los usos de la tierra. El zonaje está dentro de la fuerza policial local del gobierno. Es de un caso del 1926 que primero abordó el zonaje. ¿Qué es la fuerza policial? Es esencialmente la absoluta esencia del gobierno. La palabra policía misma proviene del griego para "polis", lo que significa ciudad. Y en su mayor significado comprensivo, señala la fuerza del gobierno en cada país, la fuerza de gobernar personas y cosas. Así que la base del zonaje es la fuerza fundamental del gobierno. Así que, para ir a la verdad, a nuestras enmiendas propuestas para la ordenanza de zonaje, estamos incluyendo una nueva definición para el hogar de los empleados. El hogar de los empleados significa, no es sorprendente, el hogar de los empleados como definido en el Código de Salud y Seguridad, sección 17008. Ahora, eso es, has oído decir eso antes, esa es la ley de hogar de los empleados estatal. Tiene una definición muy comprensiva, muy, muy larga. Estamos refiriéndose a ella, pero teníamos una preocupación por ello, lo que explica la razón de la siguiente frase. Significa el hogar de los empleados cuando las accommodations consisten en un tipo de hogar y de estructuras permitidas en el distrito de la zona. La razón para eso es simple. Bajo el Código de Salud y Seguridad, sección 17008, el hogar de los empleados, esto es en parte relevante de la ley de los empleados, significa cualquier cuartito de vivienda, vivienda, habitación, tentación, bodega, maquinaria de carros, hogar de fábrica, vehículo de conducción, otra accommodations de hogar. Así que es bastante amplio. No queríamos realmente parcels que podrían estar vacíos y venir y querer una tendencia. Así que ahora esa es la razón por el lenguaje que hay, que las accommodations tienen que ser adecuadas. Así que, de lo contrario, la definición del hogar de los empleados en la ley estatal es desconocida. Voy a notar que el hogar de los empleados significa hogar de empleados de seis o más. Estamos realmente usando eso porque estamos usando el más alto de los seis. Bien. Otra cosa que la Ley de Hogar de los Empleados hace claro es que el zonaje se aplica. La ciudad puede zonar. Sus requisitos de zonaje son válidos. Están reservados aquí a las jurisdicciones locales. Pero hay una gran excepción, y hemos hablado de esto antes. Cualquier hogar de los empleados que provea de accommodations para seis o menos empleados es considerado una estructura de familia única con una designación de uso de tierras residenciales. Así que eso significa que si una familia de seis o seis niños de colegio compartieron el mismo lugar, eso es una familia única, eso es un uso de tierras residenciales, así como el hogar de los empleados de seis o menos. Esta es la provisión clave para esta noche. El hogar de los empleados donde las accommodations se proveen de siete o más en un edificio de vivienda sólo se podrá tener en el R1, que es el R1 de baja densidad, RSL1, que es, esencialmente, vamos a llamarlo R1 para esta noche, es un parque pequeño, pero es todavía un R1 de baja densidad, o R2 de media densidad de zonas residenciales. Ese uso sólo se podrá tener con un permiso de uso condicional. Eso está bajo la ordenanza propuesta. Esto tiene que ser aprobado por el Consejo de la Ciudad. Pero eso es la propuesta, eso es el sentido de ello. ¿Por qué siete o más? Bueno, es debido a esta provisión. Ningún permiso de uso condicional, variante de zonaje o otra variante de zonaje será requerido en el hogar de los empleados que sirven a seis o menos empleados. Eso no se requiere si una familia vive en el mismo tipo y en la misma zona. Así que es similar a esa otra provisión. Así que es por eso que estamos usando el siete o más, no podemos hacer seis o menos. Así que eso significa que seis o menos empleados que viven en cualquier vivienda en cualquier distrito de zonaje residencial se podrá tener como motivo de derecho. La ciudad no regule eso. Ahora, como hemos dicho desde el principio, no estamos regulando el hogar de los empleados en el R3, que es nuestro R1 de alta densidad. Y hay algunos, lo que se llama parcels agrícolas residenciales, que son parcels más viejos. Se ven adecuados también. Solo hay un par de ellos. No tenemos ningún problema con eso. El hogar de los empleados en cualquier número se podrá tener como motivo de derecho, pero, por supuesto, sujetado a los requisitos estatales y federales. Básicamente, no necesitaríamos un permiso de uso condicional bajo la ordenanza propuesta. Bien, esta es la otra gran cosa que el personal está proponiendo como parte de esta nueva ordenanza. Va a expandir y revisar, perdón, revisar y expandir la fuerza del administrador de zonaje, el señor Ying allí, para emitir permisos de uso condicional para algunos pero no todos los usos. Hay muchos niveles diferentes de revisión. Todos están familiarizados con la comisión de planificación, revisando proyectos y permisos de uso condicional. Pero también hay proyectos más pequeños que la Comisión de Planificación y el Consejo de la Ciudad, a través de la delegación de la fuerza del Código Municipal al administrador de zonaje, ya hay algunos poderes que el administrador de zonaje tiene para aprobar ciertos usos. Creo que Frank, tal vez usted quiera agregar algo a eso ahora mismo. Déjenme dar el micrófono. Si puede expandir sobre eso.
Gracias. Frank Albro, senador de planificación. Y ahora mismo, nuestro capítulo 1235 tiene un proceso de administrador de zonaje para ciertos tipos de usos. Sin embargo, ese proceso es esencialmente incompleto porque no involucra ningún tipo de audiencia pública, que es necesario. Así que ahí es donde esta enmienda que Phil estaba discutiendo aquí entra en juego. Y como Phil ha mencionado, este fue uno de los esfuerzos que empezamos hace dos años reelegir el capítulo 1235.
¿Algunos de los usos que no se pueden revisar por el administrador de zonaje?
Así que actualmente, el administrador de zonaje puede emitir permisos de uso para cosas como iglesias, grupos de vivienda con doce o más unidades, perdón, doce o menos unidades. Cuando tenemos un restaurante que quiere servir té o vino, eso requiere un permiso de uso condicional, y el administrador de zonaje es autorizado por el código actual a emitir esos permisos de uso. Hay ventas temporales en hoteles. Hay una reciente enmienda que hablaba de la fachada con barba de madera. Requiere el aprobamiento del administrador de zonaje, un permiso de uso condicional. Y más recientemente, planes de contención de carros para las tiendas de bares para reducir la proliferación de los carros de shopping por todo el vecindario. Vou solo agregar que entre la lista existente de 1235 de usos que el administrador de zonaje es autorizado a aprobar, los elementos que otras secciones de nuestro código autorizan al administrador de zonaje a aprobar, el único elemento nuevo en la enmienda propuesta es el H2A o el hogar de los empleados. Así que esencialmente, los tipos de cosas que el administrador de zonaje ya ha sido autorizado a aprobar permanecerán igual excepto por la adición del hogar de los empleados y algunos otros cambios menores que solo hacen que la palabra sea más streamline y tire algunas cosas que ya no existen y así sucesivamente.
Gracias, Frank. Creo que no usaremos este hasta, no son tan buenos. Pero principalmente, lo que quería que Frank comentara fue que esto no es realmente una nueva cosa. Estamos cambiando la forma en que se está haciendo. Y él dijo que hay una razón para eso, que no hemos realmente estado ofreciendo una audiencia pública para estos. Y eso es probablemente algo que es una muy buena idea. Así que, nuevamente, Frank acaba de mencionar que el único nuevo uso para el administrador de zonaje, el único nuevo poder que el administrador de zonaje tendrá que él actualmente no tiene es aprobar el hogar de los empleados de siete o más en un R1 o R2 de zona residencial. Ahora, hay un poco de nudo en esto, voy a dejarlo por ahí. Hay algo llamado zona de overlay PD. Eso es, cubre una buena parte de la ciudad. Hay algunas razones por ello. Cuando una propiedad está en la zona de overlay PD, el administrador de zonaje también estará siendo autorizado. Normalmente, la Comisión de Planificación emitiría permisos en la zona de overlay PD, pero una excepción está siendo tomada si es hogar de siete o más empleados y el número total de unidades en el sitio de proyecto es doce o menos. El administrador de zonaje todavía estará en grado de permitir o de emitir el permiso para eso. Si es más de doce, la Comisión de Planificación debe emitir el permiso para eso. No creo que tengamos realmente alguno. Pero queríamos dejar eso solo en caso. No siempre se puede predecir el futuro. Pero eso es solo un pequeño nudo. No lo mencionaremos durante el resto de la noche. Bien. Aquí está el proceso. Este puede no ser la aplicación. Lo he descargado del sitio web de la ciudad, pero habrá una aplicación que la persona tiene que completar. Tiene que pagar el pago. ¿Hay actualmente una factura de cantidad para eso ahora mismo?
Vamos a tener que identificar una cantidad específica.
Estoy pensando que es 3500 para una condición de uso de la Comisión de Planificación, ¿es eso correcto?
Creo que eso es aproximadamente correcto.
Bien, así que será menos que eso.
Correcto.
Y puede ser necesario para el Consejo de la Ciudad adoptar una resolución para establecer el pago, pero habrá un pago. Bien, el tercer paso es, tienes que esperar. El personal tiene que revisar la carta, una aplicación, revisarla, y tiene 30 días bajo la ley estatal para determinar o encontrar que es completo o incompleto. Si es incompleto, se envía una carta diciendo, aquí está la cosa que necesitamos para completar tu aplicación. Si es completo, entonces pasamos a la siguiente etapa. El cuarto paso. La advertencia de audiencia pública debe ser enviada y publicada. Eso es después de que el personal haya preparado el informe de personal y haya decidido cuál es el momento en que el audiencia va. Así que Frank, ¿cuánto tiempo crees que tomará para hacer esto? Había algunos preguntas ayer. ¿Cuánto tiempo crees que tomará después de que se haga una aplicación completa para preparar un informe de personal y ponerlo en audiencia?
Yo diría que probablemente seguirá el mismo camino que hacemos para los audiencias de la Comisión de Planificación. Una cosa que probablemente veremos es que no tendremos que hacer trabajo en estos proyectos más pequeños. Pero diría que desde el momento en que la aplicación sea considerada completa, sería aproximadamente 30 a 45 días.
Lo pensé bien. Supuse. Estoy contento de haberlo hecho bien. Así que estamos a 60 a 75 días en el proceso cuando la advertencia, cuando la audiencia ocurre. Hay algunos detalles sobre la audiencia que queremos pasar por la advertencia. La advertencia de la audiencia va a ser llevada a cabo a base de la Ley del Gobierno, sección 65091, que requiere que la advertencia sea enviada o entregada al menos diez días antes de la audiencia a la propietaria de la propiedad y a todos los propietarios de la propiedad real dentro de 300 pies de la propiedad real que es el tema de la audiencia. Y debe ser publicada, una advertencia legal debe ser publicada en un periódico al menos diez días antes de la audiencia, o debe ser publicada en al menos tres lugares públicos, incluyendo el ubicación del proyecto. Así que el personal está haciendo ambos. Realmente no es necesario. Podemos hacer uno o el otro. Y creo que lo que harán, dependerá del desprecio del personal de hacer, cuál es más calculado para producir el mayor, tener mayor advertencia o realmente avisar. Quiero decir, si la propiedad está en una calle de tráfico fuerte como Waller o Betteravia y no hay mucho tráfico de pies, no tiene sentido publicar la ley en la jaula de frente porque no va a haber mucha gente en el vecindario caminando por ahí viendo que hay una audiencia que viene. Así que una advertencia legal sería más probable de llegar a la gente en ese caso. Mientras que si está en el vecindario, poner un palo en el suelo y tener la advertencia publicada durante diez días o así, donde la gente pueda ver lo que está pasando, eso es más probable de alertar al público. Bien, ahora, esto es otra cosa nueva. Esto es nuevo. En adición a la información requerida por la Ley del Gobierno, sección 65091, que habla de la descripción general de la audiencia y qué está en juego y la dirección y dónde ir y todo eso, la advertencia de la audiencia identificará la acción tentativa que el administrador de zonaje tomará, ya sea aprobada, aprobada bajo condiciones, o desaprobada. La advertencia también indica que la decisión tentativa se convertirá en la acción final del proyecto el 15 día después de la audiencia, a menos que la decisión tentativa se cambie como resultado de la información obtenida en la audiencia o es apelada a base de el capítulo, o es apelada. Una cosa que quiero respaldar, vamos a tener reuniones regulares. ¿Habías hablado con Ryan sobre cuántas veces crees que las harás? Ryan es el director, el director de la división de planificación.
No creo que haya habido una determinación aún. La mayoría, estamos hablando de una o dos veces al mes. Y luego, si no hay elementos para cualquier audiencia particular programada, simplemente cancelaremos esas reuniones.
Eso era lo que asumí. Bueno, pensé dos veces al mes y luego durante los meses que no hay ninguno, simplemente se cancelará. Así que la advertencia también declarará que la aplicación se actuará como un elemento de agenda de consentimiento en la agenda de reuniones sin audiencia pública si no se hace una solicitud de audiencia pública. Así que alguien encuentra y tiene un problema con ello, tienen que hacer una solicitud escrita para una audiencia pública, proporcionada al departamento de Comunidad de Desarrollo, no antes de siete días antes de la reunión. Así que es un tiempo bastante corto involucrado. Pero el proceso, nuevamente, la advertencia sale, la ley va en el suelo, la gente la ve. Si tienen un problema con ello, pueden enviar una solicitud escrita para una audiencia. Tiene que recibirlo siete días antes de la fecha de audiencia. Y si nadie reclama, si nadie solicita una audiencia y no hay objeción, simplemente se aprobará como es. Y luego la razón por los 15 días, lo siento, eso es otra cosa. Oh, después de la audiencia, si hay una audiencia, la advertencia debe ser enviada 15 días, no antes de 50 días antes de, oh, no, lo siento, olvidé una palabra cuando dije eso. Inmediatamente después de la audiencia, la advertencia debe ser enviada, y no puede ser enviada antes de 15 días antes de la fecha. Así que, en otras palabras, es un elemento de agenda de consentimiento y no hay objeción, tienes que esperar a la fecha de audiencia para enviarlo. Y luego la otra persona que hizo una solicitud para recibir la advertencia también recibirá la advertencia de la decisión. ¿Quieres agregar algo?
Si pudiera interrumpir, en este contexto, siempre va a haber una reunión regular y tendremos que determinar cuántas veces ocurren. Así que habrá una reunión o un momento en el que el administrador de zonaje determinará estos elementos. Si, en términos de este contexto, la audiencia pública no es la misma que la reunión. Una audiencia pública es una oportunidad para que se tome testimonio, para que el público hable, para que el candidato hable sobre un elemento. De lo contrario, todos los elementos en una audiencia de administrador de zonaje van a ser, esencialmente, un elemento de agenda de consentimiento.
Gracias por esa clarificación, Frank. Bien, así que el último paso, la audiencia se lleva. Y como he dicho, después de la conclusión de la reunión, el administrador de zonaje o sea, anunciará la decisión como la acción administrativa final, y el permiso se convertirá en efectivo a menos que sea apelado. Ahora, los 14 días es el periodo de apelación. Por eso se convierte en efectivo el 15 día. El administrador de zonaje también puede anunciar que la decisión ha sido cambiada de la advertencia tentativa basada en la información obtenida en la audiencia. O puede continuar para dar cierta, proporcionar tiempo adicional para evaluar la información obtenida en la audiencia. Así que, en otras palabras, si hay gente que solicita una audiencia, hay una audiencia, más información llega a la luz, puede continuar para más información si eso es necesario. Otra cosa que no tengo en estas diapositivas, si por alguna razón el administrador de zonaje siente que una aplicación en particular debería ser decidida por la Comisión de Planificación, puede decidirlo sin hacer ninguna decisión. O también podría continuar después de una audiencia y decir, esto son demasiadas cosas, no esperábamos tanto información, vamos a continuar con la audiencia de la Comisión de Planificación. Bien, ya he mencionado esto, la advertencia será enviada y a cualquiera que le dé una solicitud escrita de advertencia, la decisión es apelable a la Comisión de Planificación, así que hay supervisión, y la decisión de la Comisión de Planificación, por supuesto, es apelable al Consejo de la Ciudad. Eso es realmente todo para esta noche, en cuanto a lo que se involucra en la ordenanza propuesta. Hay mucho más, muchos más partes movidas en la ordenanza, pero realmente no es relevante para el aspecto del hogar de los empleados. Esta es la necesidad de ello. Ahora, una de las cosas que surgió durante nuestros foros fue posiblemente usar algunas propiedades comerciales o industriales para el hogar de los empleados. El原本 draft de esta ordenanza propuso permitir el hogar de los empleados de cualquier tipo de alojamiento como uso condicional en los zonas comerciales C1 y C2. En este momento, esto no es permitido. El personal está interesado en hacer esto y posiblemente en zonas industriales también. Pero debido a los complejos problemas que desarrollamos en nuestra primera conversación sobre ello, realmente, sentimos que no tenemos suficiente, no teníamos suficiente tiempo para que los empleados lo estudiaran adecuadamente. Así que se ha borrado del draft, pero intentamos perseguir esto en los próximos meses. He dicho antes en estos foros que el personal ha tenido algunos a corto plazo, algunos tipo de fines de año, fines de año, objetivos medios y algunos objetivos a largo plazo. Y esta ordenanza esta noche es un objetivo a corto plazo, pero el uso de los hogares de los empleados en zonas comerciales y industriales es un tipo de objetivo medio. Y vamos a estar trabajando en eso en los próximos meses, pero eso va a ser algo que no se arruinará. Y vamos a, no sé cuánto tardará, pero vamos a estar empezando después del comienzo del año. Eso es todo lo que tengo. ¿Te gustaría agregar algo, Frank?
Sólo para reiterar que cuando el draft salga mañana con el informe de personal de la Comisión de Planificación, verás que sólo el 10% de los cambios al código tienen que ver con el H2A o el hogar de los empleados. Y para reiterar lo que dije antes, este fue un proceso de reelegir este capítulo solo para el proceso del administrador de zonaje y separar ese proceso de otros, lo que llamamos permisos de caja, como permisos de barbecue y permisos temporales de venta de piso de parque, y así sucesivamente, que el personal de planificación hace casi diariamente. Así que mientras vas a través de las enmiendas cuando salga, perdón, mañana, nuevamente, el 90% de ello tiene que ver con cosas que ya estábamos contemplando antes del proceso del H2A o la pregunta del H2A que surgió.
Bien, estamos...
¿Por qué estoy en la reunión? ¿Usted es el dueño de parking rec?
Creo que está en la reunión equivocada.
Sí, porque el tenis es supuestamente de tenis en un campo. Y hay baloncesto, basquetbol, brújula y vete en un campo. Tengo 35 años en tenis. Es muy chaleco.
¿Alguien de Parks Rec aquí? Creo que podrían estar en el próximo oficio allí.
Gracias, señor. Lo siento por el desagrado.
Lo siento por el desagrado. Bien. Eso es diferente. No vamos a hacer las preguntas escritas esta noche porque no hemos tenido realmente mucha suerte con eso, pero también no queremos caminar por la sala. Quiero animar a la gente a venir. Vamos a formar una fila y responder cualquier pregunta que puedan tener. Así que voy a poner el micrófono aquí y luego quien quiera venir y hacer una pregunta. Si alguien quiere esperar en la fila, obtendrán su turno también. ¿Está de acuerdo? Parece que tenemos a nuestro primer cliente.
Buenas noches. No puedo hablar inglés mucho.
Totalmente olvidé que tenemos un traductor aquí para cualquiera que lo necesite. Lo siento por eso. No necesitaba nadie, nadie necesitaba una traducción en la última reunión, así que olvidé mencionarlo. Disculpen.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Pedro Paez, soy un miembro de la comunidad de Santa María, gente unida del Valle de Santa María.
Pedro, ¿ok? Es Pedro Paez.
Él está en el rango, señor. ¡Ay, Dios mío!
Es un miembro de la comunidad aquí en Santa María y pertenece a una organización de la comunidad, United People.
Yo necesitaría saber dónde podría adquirir toda esa información que usted nos dio porque no alcanza a mirar muchas cosas y necesitaría todo lo que usted dio, que hay información.
Quería saber dónde puedo solicitar toda esa documentación que mostraron porque no pude verlo claramente debido a mi visibilidad, así que me gustaría obtenerla.
La información estará disponible en el sitio web de la ciudad mañana por la tarde. Copias hard están también disponibles en la oficina de la policía, en la oficina de Comunidad de Desarrollo, en 110 South Pine Street.
Gracias. Además, quisiera decirles una cosa, que ustedes están haciendo unas ordenanzas quizás muy duras para los rancheros y nuestra gente que viene a trabajar a estas ciudades, a cualquier situación que estén consumidas.
Me gustaría compartir que están desarrollando una ordenanza que es bastante estricta para todos esos rancheros y también para mantener a los trabajadores que vienen de otro país aquí.
Y recuerden que la gente que viene a trabajar tiene que trabajar duro y viene con una misión de servir a una ciudad que ustedes van a recibir mucho dinero sobre esa gente.
Solo recuerden que los que vienen aquí a trabajar, van a dejar mucho dinero para usted en esta ciudad.
Gracias. Buenas noches.
Gracias.
Puede traducir por él si quiere. Señor, estamos tratando de equilibrar los intereses. Hay muchas personas en la ciudad que no creen que este es un lugar apropiado para alojar a los trabajadores, estos vecinos. Y luego, hay una obvia necesidad para los trabajadores, como has mencionado. Así que nuestra ordenanza es un intento de equilibrar los intereses de los dos lados y hacer posible darle a la gente del vecindario algo de confort, algo de seguridad de que si algo sale mal, la ciudad puede tomar acción para corregirlo. Pero también protege el derecho y la capacidad de los negocios agrícolas de encontrar hogar para los trabajadores que necesitan para sus operaciones. Al menos ese era nuestro objetivo, eso es lo que estamos tratando de lograr.
Bueno, pues muchos años atrás hemos peleado porque los trabajadores o por eso, que no son H2A, también tuvieran una casa propia y hasta la fecha no hemos tenido ninguna respuesta a esa solución. Y ese es otro tema al que no debemos tratar.
También quiero mencionar que muchos años antes habíamos estado solicitando hogar para esos trabajadores agrícolas que viven aquí. Sé que ese no es el tema en este momento, pero también es algo que debe considerar.
Thank you.
Hi, Judy Frost, just a couple of process questions.
I just remembered, I didn't reply to your email, I'm sorry.
No, it's quite, quite all right, I was just giving you-
I'll do it tomorrow.
No, that's okay. Just a couple of process questions, if I may, and I'll just say the three, and then you can answer them. In this case, is the applicant only the property owner?
Yes. Unless the owner has granted permission for someone else, like the tenant, to make the application on the owner's behalf.
So, an owner can enter a lease agreement with a grower, and the grower then could file the application?
Yes, our standard procedure is the owner, we require the owner's signature even if an agent is doing that.
How would it be determined how many people, seven or more, would be in this R1 facility?
Not following you.
Okay, so, they'd have to file for a conditional use permit if they're going to put seven or more in it. We know that the H2A program has specific requirements of square footage of how many people.
Correct.
Are we, is the application process going to depend upon the applicant's statement as to how many people fit into that facility, or is that going to be inspected? Inspected is too hard of a word, but you know what, I think you know, get the gist of my question.
In the words of Ronald Reagan, we want to trust but verify, if possible. We are trying to establish, won't be part of the ordinance, but we're trying to establish a working relationship with Housing and Community Development. They do the inspections to see that they comply with the H2A federal and state regulations. We want to tag along, have building department go out, or co-compliance go out, and inspect the houses at the same time. Because we want to, and I'll give you a good reason why we want to do that. Say that somebody has illegally converted a patio by putting some walls without building permit, and now they've got a sleeping room, and they can sleep four or five workers there based on the square footage. Housing and Community Development doesn't care. I mean, that's not their role. They look and say, oh, there's a room.
Right.
They don't know if it's been illegally or legally constructed.
That isn't their-
That isn't their thing. So, they will say, okay, you can put five or six people there in that room, and then, you know, however many more. We want to go out with them and say, oh, wait a second, this is not a permitted conversion. They can't use this room, we're not going to grant clearance for that. So, that's the reason why we're going to try to create a tag team kind of approach for inspections.
And would that-
And they've told us they'll work with us.
And would that be part of co-compliance, or part of the zoning?
It'd probably be both.
Okay.
Yeah. Co-compliance works very closely with building, we'll probably both have an inspection team, and they'll go out with the HCD inspector, and they'll do a joint inspection.
And then, my last thing, I'm going to sit down, is you've identified that there is the use of the word "appeal" was in the process. What is the appeal process, or what are the grounds that a neighborhood or the people that live within three hundred feet, what are the grounds upon which they might appeal as a part of the hearing process?
It's the same grounds as any other conditional use permit. Frank probably knows it by heart. They are something like, the use can't be versed to, oh, here, he has it handy.
Is that in the code that'll come out tomorrow?
Correct. This is part of the existing code, and it's also the new amendment. So, for the approval of a conditional use permit has to be based on the ability of the decision-making body, whether it's the planning commission or the zoning administrator, to make the following findings. And I'll abbreviate and paraphrase these, that the site is adequate size and appropriate for the scope of the use that's proposed, the site has access to highways and streets and sidewalks, the proposed use will have no adverse effect on abutting properties, and that the establishment of the use will not detriment to the health and welfare, safety, or morals of the neighborhood or the surrounding area. So, those are the four main findings for any conditional use permit approval, and that will also apply to any conditional use permit for employee housing. I do just want to reiterate for those that don't know, Housing and Community Development is actually the State Department of Housing and Community Development, so that's an agency that is a state-level agency, not part of the city. So, we are very concerned when there's buildings built without permits, and we will do our utmost to stop that as part of the process. Since most of you have been here, you knew that, Frank hasn't, so he didn't know. Yes, I didn't mean to imply that our building division doesn't talk to our community development, or the rest of our community development department, but the state doesn't regulate the building codes, so that was fair to point that out. Please?
Hello, Kitten Pancho from Lower Lodge. Quick question, I read up on the H2A housing guideline online, and what I've heard here, one of the things is, they only require fifty square feet per person. That's the standard, if federal. Apartments, they can vary in sizes. You can fit up to ten people in an apartment, only one bathroom. Are you going to look at those variables and make decision on that?
Is that your full question? Yes, absolutely. First of all, they're going to have to meet federal and state requirements. In addition, they're going to have to meet our local requirements. Now, one thing that I learned through this process, our third meeting when we had representatives from EDD and HCD, one of the things that they say is that you can't, you have to have a living area in a H2A housing, employee housing. So, there has to be a place for living, eating, and sleeping. So, if an entire apartment has been turned into sleeping quarters, that's not going to work. It won't pass state and federal regulations. The fifty square feet is actually, for veterans, is actually arguably more restrictive than state law. So, we're going to go with whatever laws is most appropriate. So, for the bedrooms, it would be fifty square feet per person, as opposed to the state standard of seventy square feet for the first two, and fifty for every person thereafter. That means that you can get, under state law, you can get three people in a bedroom of a hundred and twenty square feet, but under federal law, you can only get two, because you would need a hundred and fifty for three.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Leo Corona. I'd like to speak as a resident of the northwest side of Santa Maria. You know, I see the ordinance coming up and everything, and there's a lot of time and town hall meetings that's been spent with this ordinance, but as the planning commissioner said, we're only talking here about ten percent of the people that work here in Santa Maria. What are we doing about the other ninety percent? I live on the northwest side of town, I deal with the overcrowding of the vehicles in the streets, day in, day out. I deal with the overcrowding of the houses, day in, day out, the trash in the streets, we have an office off on Mill Street. We complain to the city numerous times about the trash and everything. I don't see town hall meetings regarding that. I don't see education with the community regarding that. Yet, H2A, here we are in the fifth meeting already, and you want to pass this ordinance in two weeks? By God, I don't think the city's ever done anything this quick in the past. How about the rest of the issues? What are we doing about the rest of the problems? I'd like to know.
Well, thank you for that question. That is an extraordinarily complex issue. What you're saying is that there should be some way to regulate occupancy.
You said employee housing, right? So, if I have a group of employees that work for a particular employer, am I going to be able to ask you to go regulate them as well?
Well, employee housing is a unique situation, because there is a state statute that talks about it, and it, you know, the reason why it says that you can't treat employee housing of six or fewer differently than single families, because, well, naturally, we would. It's a different kind of use than a family use.
Well, Mr. Sinco, there's a lot of employers that bring in people that migrate from Yuma, to Izalay, that are a group of men, not because they're not H2A, but they're a group of men living in a house, in a motel, you're not going to regulate them?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, if they're, if they need, H2A is part of employee housing-
The non-issue.
But employee housing is more than just H2A. If there are employees who are domestic workers that are imported from, say, Northern California, that's wrong, transported from Northern California, but they're, you know, residents-
I'd like to know-
Let me finish this sentence, please. If they're legal residents, and they're citizens of the country, and they're workers that are domestic workforce, and they're brought here as employee housing, we would regulate that as well. If there are people that live here, that just happen to be farmworkers, and they rent an apartment, no, we don't regulate that any differently than any other family situation.
So, again, I'll go back to my original question then. So, the issues here with Santa Maria, I don't want to move from Santa Maria, I'm happy to live in here, but what is the city going to do about the overcrowding issue? And the problems that really, I mean, they've been building up for the last few years, yet nothing, again, I don't see town hall meetings.
Well, I did have a town hall meeting on that very issue in 2003, in this very room.
So, that's fifteen years ago.
I understand, I know that. And I had a town hall meeting, but I basically had a town hall meeting to educate people that there was very little that we could do because of state law. And, I was lucky to get out of there alive. People were very angry with me, because they didn't want to hear of the fact that the state has basically tied our hands as a city.
So, why is it still being targeted?
I'm sorry?
Why is it still being targeted at that? Why are we being blamed, I feel like we're being blamed for an issue that's city-wide?
Well, there is a basis for treating H2A housing differently than domestic people, people who live here. There's a, there's some case law that supports the treating of somebody who's not a permanent resident of a city differently than people who are here, sorry, I'm mixing my words. There is a basis under the law to treat in favor of people who are permanent residents of the community as people who are transients. The case dealt with people who were staying in a town for thirty days or so, like in a short-term rental, like an Airbnb, but the logic applies to longer stay, too.
I understand what you're saying, it does nothing to the problems we have here in Santa Maria, and I hope you guys then take to heart the real problems that we have here, and do something about it.
I'm absolutely aware of those problems, they have been raised, as Commissioner Dickerson mentioned, that it's a problem.
I just hope you show that energy with those issues, like you've been showing with the H2A.
I absolutely am. There are some possibilities that I'm working on, I haven't finished my analysis, I'm not ready to go public. I'm trying to come up with some solutions that may address some of the problems. There is something possibly, well, I don't want to get technical about it, but there are some things that I'm going to possibly be bringing to the council for his consideration in 2019 that might address some of this. In the meantime, we're going to be focusing on the impacts of overcrowding, and, you know, that kind of thing with the code enforcement.
Okay, just to finish up again, I live on the northwest side of town, this is going to do nothing for me. It's not going to alleviate any of the issues we have on the northwest side. Thank you.
You know, in response to Mr. Coro- In response to Mr. Corona's issue, the ordinance is that the complaints that we can talk about were health issues, anything that would impact the neighborhood, which would be noise or nuisance, or anything like that. Could those complaints be brought to the city, to your office, and regardless of whether they're residents or whether they're non-residents, can we do something about that to alleviate his situation?
Absolutely, thank you for that. We can and do address what we call the impacts of those kinds of situations. We did have a case involving the property Mr. Corona's talking about, and we did affect some change. Now, I don't know if it was, I don't know if it was to your satisfaction.
Nothing's changed.
Okay.
Everything's still the same.
All right, well, we did start, and we did take some action, and I know that there was a case that was working on it, of course, people are very clever, and they can, they can, they can, like, for instance, we run into a situation where we'll find somebody sleeping in a garage, we do a code enforcement case, we do an order, we make them tear down the walls, and restore the parking, and then we leave, we close the case, and then we're gone, and then they do it again. So, it's cat and mouse. I can't say that everything we do is going to be a hundred percent effective all the time. We're not in the, you know, miracle business, we're in the practical solutions business, and we do the best we can with respect to addressing those impacts.
How do we address it? Do we fine them, do we give them big fines to where they will learn not to do this again, that they will be better neighbors? I know complaints that I get are people defecating in their backyard. Now, that talks to the health of the community, because that raises diseases right then and there. And so, I think what we need to do is start maybe fining these people at a very hefty rate to make sure that they won't do this again.
I assure you, council member, we do. We have fines of ten and twenty thousand dollars after compliance orders that don't get paid, and then we lean the house. Or sometimes they do get paid, not usually that high. But we definitely can and do have a very aggressive program. I'm going to follow up with my staff next week, the supervisor's on vacation until Monday, but I'm going to follow up on Mr. Corona's case and see what's happening, because I thought it was being addressed when the last time he was here, and I'm hearing tonight that he feels that it hasn't been, so I'm going to look into it. These cases are hard, and I tell people a lot, it's a good thing that it's hard for the government to get into business and take your property, or tell you how to live your life. It's a good thing that it's hard, but, again, if we keep at it, we eventually get to that point where reason prevails, and we get to that point where somebody's had every chance to correct it, and they haven't, and then the penalties come, and then the court case comes, and then the property is abated through city operations. Every case is unique and different, but, and we do try, and, as you know, we moved and everything, we've had some challenges in our staffing. We went from basically four highly experienced officers to two, and we were, we had a hard time, a long time to recruit two new people who were coming along. We're getting back to speed, and our caseload is increasing, and our productivity is increasing, but it's still going to take some time to get back to that level of efficiency. It was unfortunate we had two defections at the same time. But anyway, you have a question, Carlos?
Yeah, and before I do, I just wanted to address the topic that you're on, because I want to make sure the public's not confused. What you're referring to, what you're referring to is not H2A. The issues that Mr. Corona referred to, and Councilwoman Waterfield referred to, is not an H2A issue. So, I just want the public to be very clear on that, because this program is highly regulated, and I appreciate Phil and the City of Santa Maria putting together these town hall meetings and helping us get educated on what this program does. And I hope that by listening to these, we've learned that this is the artery that keeps agriculture alive. Those of us that are really involved in ag understand that this is the artery that's feeding our growers, which is feeding our community, our ag-based community. And, due to legislation, due to federal politics, due to whatever you want to name it, our aging workforce, our issues at the border, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, agriculture's not what it used to be. And so, we rely heavily on this program. And this program is the only lifeblood we have left, so I apologize if I'm questioning anything up here, Phil. I trust the judgment of our civil servants, but I have to question it when we're moving at breakneck speed. When we're trying to propose something that nobody here has seen, and then we're supposed to get planning commission to vote on it next week, and shortly thereafter, the city council is supposed to vote on it? I mean, what city on the planet do we live on where a proposal has been made? And not one, I attended all the town hall meetings, not one have we had an opportunity to give input as a community for how this is going to be written. So, it's not stuffed down our throats, because this is the end of ag, as you know it. And I'm not trying to be, you know, sarcastic, but it's real, this is real. I've traveled to over ten different ag states in our nation that have suffered through this, that have gone to E-Verify or other means and seen how they've lost their crops, massive crop losses. So, we've had a very diplomatic conversation with agriculture and with the city thus far, but I'm afraid that if the city goes down this path, there's going to be major crop losses in the City of Santa Maria, and the city's going to end up suffering for it, just like they did, the City of Guadalupe did, because I think unfortunately, those losses are going to have to be paid somehow. Thank you, Phil.
I'll overlook the fact there was no question there. I will say this, Carlos, I apologize for the, I do apologize for the breakneck speed, but I've never made a secret of where we were going and what the ultimate destination was. We were going to do these forums to educate, so that when it was time to propose an ordinance, the council and the community would be well informed. I don't really think the ordinance is so complicated that you're unable to, I mean, with all respect, you're a very intelligent man. You get the gist of the ordinance, it's not rocket science. Whether you like it or not, it's a totally different thing, and it's a policy decision that the council will have to make. And it's going to be a tough decision, both planning commission and the city council, we're going to have to, there'll be people coming out, there'll be more time for the, if the council ultimately decides that this isn't the right ordinance, and they want staff to go back and study it, do something else, or go down, I'm perfectly fine with that. I am in the options presenting business. I'm not here to debate policy, I don't want to, but I do want to provide options for our elected and funded officials to make- to make an intelligent decision.
We've been working on this for over a year in San Luis, just to let you know. And there's been stakeholders meeting there and putting, it's working well for the community and for ag. So just to see something done in three weeks, Phil, that's what I'm trying to get at.
Fair enough.
Hi, my name is Mike Franchelista. I have a question about R three property. Are there going to be any inspections for R three to do H two A housing?
If somebody, in R three, we wouldn't be part of this, wouldn't be part of the city ordinance. If the state has its own inspection requirements, they would have, we'd have to do the inspections from the state.
So then no permit for R three?
Correct.
Hello. I would just like to ask, I reviewed the ordinance that was published online, or the draft, I guess, the draft before the draft.
And it wasn't published online. You might have gotten a privately circulated copy.
Okay, yeah.
It wasn't, it's not been publicly released.
Snuck it out, yeah.
Yeah, we got a leak.
It was a break, yeah. But anyway, I took a look, and what I would just like to hope is that it seems like there's just a little bit of subjectivity here. And I would, whenever we propose a new project, multifamily or otherwise, very stated criteria, open space, landscape, parking, and stuff like that. And it just, there was, there was just no detail here. And it seemed like if someone complains and there was a noise, worried about noise, they could, you know, there could be a condition where you have to put a block wall around your property. Or you have to improve an alley approach that might be, you know, a hundred feet away because you're having a bus come through or something. So I would just like to see, and just that there's very clear steps. And then also, if there was an appeal made, you know, what level of, I guess, just mitigating factors that you could do? And then would there be another appeal potentially period after that? Like, let's say you made some mitigating effects towards that appeal. Would there be something, I mean, would that still be under the administrator's purview?
Not exactly certainly understand what you're saying. You're saying if a zoning administrator's permit was denied for some reasons.
For an appeal.
Could you come back with a new application and with those modifications to address that? Is that what your question was?
Well, I prefer not to pay thirty-five hundred twice.
Well, it wouldn't be thirty-five hundred.
Yeah, or whatever it is.
Unless it's an appeal.
I guess I'm just saying, if someone appealed it, would, and is there some mitigating factors that you, that obviously that staff or, you know, the community development department would propose? And then you can incorporate that into your plan, just like a normal plan check, you know, or going to a planning commission or whatever. You know, when they give you, they have conditions of approval or something like that to help mitigate some dangerous concerns or something like that.
Sure. One of the things that you saw was that there's three options that can come out. If there is a public hearing, one of them is to make a decision, and the other is to continue it for a time. So my thinking, maybe our zoning administrator could answer that question. But my thinking would be is if something like that happened where a couple of issues came up and you're like, hey, we can fix that, we can, well, we need a continuance. I think the zoning administrator would gladly continue it, give you a chance to do that so that there's not a need to finalize it and go. It's not going to be like, oh, sorry, today's the hearing, they were finalizing. We, Santa Maria's very known for working, being flexible with applicants. And I don't see this being any different.
One hundred percent, yeah. And just, you know, we've done several developing, you know, small building projects here. It's just, it's been a pleasure to work with everybody in the community development department, so.
Make sure that everyone knows.
No, it really is.
Thank you.
Yeah, so that's it. I'd just like to make sure that there's pretty clear criteria and.
I think I'm going to let Frank answer that. I don't know that clear, actually, I'm the latter director of the community development. Development answered that question. I'm not sure clear guidelines are so great. I think there's some benefit in being flexible, but John, you, everyone?
Hi. I think what you're, I appreciate the comment on subjectivity. I think what you're hinting at is maybe a set of performance standards. And Frank, our staff, has indicated some of the findings that are necessary in determining a decision. Safety and welfare, things of that sort. And so, you know, if somebody files an appeal, it would be an appeal on the zoning minister's decision that something met a certain criteria. And there's a disagreement that such and such would result in unsafe condition or not. But it's hard to anticipate because we're creating a process. And frankly, I don't really know what to expect. And so there's, we're all trying to figure this out.
You have other questions? Okay.
Don't have a question, but I'd just like to make some comments. My name's Kaye Ellis, and I'm representing the Grower Shipper Association of Santa Barbara and San Luis Obispo Counties. I just want to say that we appreciate the thoughtful H two A town hall process that has occurred since June of this year. The process has been helpful in identifying some key questions and answers to those questions. And it's really served as an opportunity for the community dialogue and education. So we appreciate that. We understand that the draft ordinance regarding the H two A housing is going to be unveiled tomorrow. And then a planning commission meeting on November twenty-first, which is next Wednesday, just the evening before Thanksgiving, just going to lay that out. The city council meeting is on December fourth. Those are both fast approaching. We're definitely concerned that the accelerated timeline for the ordinance review and the proposed adoption goes against this town hall process. And it also goes against a thoughtful and orderly planning process. Our members, they need adequate time to review and consider the potential implications and also the consequences of what is actually being proposed. We don't believe that a thoughtful review can be confined to a two-week process. Also, really want to mention, this is pretty important, but that a lot of our members have already made their financial commitments in preparation for the two thousand and nineteen season. So we really just need the time to talk about this and think it through and not pass something so quickly. And again, we renew our commitment to continuing to engage in this process, as do our members, who would definitely be impacted most by this ordinance. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Kelly White O'Neill, citizen and planning commissioner. I just have one question and kind of one comment. I really appreciate the fact that you're using the employee housing language and casting a large umbrella over this issue because this isn't just about farm worker housing. This is any kind of industry that's going to need employees. So I'm glad we're covering a lot of terrain. And I really appreciate the fact that this ordinance kind of follows the rigor and the high standards of all the building processes and housing processes in the community. I'm really pleased to see that. Although the conversation earlier, the banter earlier, was that the thirty-five hundred dollar fee could be changed and, I assume, lessened. Does that mean that the conditional use permit process and standards will also be potentially lessened? Or will we maintain the high standards and rigor that we always do on our conditional use permits?
Excellent question. I'm happy to answer that. We will definitely be maintaining the standards. The goal of the zoning administrative process and the lower fee is to reflect a more streamlined process, doesn't involve as much staff time. And hence, there's no need to charge the same amount as if it was getting prepared for a planning commission. But the same standards are going to apply.
Hello. I don't have a question. I just want to say, you know, nobody's going to be happy with anything. You're not going to make everybody happy. We're not happy with this yet, but we understand. Everybody has to make compromises. And at least we're here talking about it. And I agree with this gentleman. I live on the west side. And that is a thing. But that's something we have to start fighting. This got started because we kept calling and calling and calling. I mean, ask all the city council, they know my name by heart. You know, but you have to start being there, going every, at least once a month. Sometimes I went twice a month. You have to keep going. But like I said, we all have to compromise. At least we're here talking about it and not fighting over it or suing over it or whatever. We're talking about it. We can come up with a compromise.
Thank you. I've always been happy with your comments. The, I would second that in that as a lawyer, we always knew we had a good settlement when everybody walked away feeling a little bit unhappy. So that's a good point.
Hi, my name's Thea Macias, and I live here since nineteen sixty. I wasn't born then, but you know. I'm homeowner. I also own several rentals and things, and I own rentals in other areas. And not the H two A housing. I think what we're doing is bringing the issue to light, and there's going to be some oversight on it. And I don't have a problem with that. I don't like Mr. Corona. I am fed with what's happening in our community. In the other communities I live in, I have to get a permit as a landlord of more than one house. I have to be, I have to go in and get a, and get a city permit to be a landlord for one or more houses. I have to have an inspection annually. Well, I shouldn't say that. Annually, I'm required to renew it. If there has been a complaint against one of my houses, then I have to pay for the inspection. And that's not cheap. It's two hundred and fifty dollars for one of the communities I'm in, three hundred and fifty dollars for another, for my annual permit. If I have no complaints, it's fifty dollars. But every three years, I, every unit has to be inspected. Every, I mean, when my three years comes up with each one of those. If I rent a room out, I become a landlord. I have to abide by those same guidelines. And so there are solutions. Other communities have come up with solutions, just like they've cut out the solutions of, I own three properties along the beach, and we are not going to be, be able to use Airbnb. They have put ordinances on there with three months requirements. Our city, if they chose to do so, can do so. They have chosen not to.
Well, hold on, hold on. They haven't, it's not that they have chosen not to, we haven't given them the opportunity to act on that. One of the things that came out of this process was an idea of something very similar to what you, and it's one of my side projects I'm working on, is researching other cities. What cities were you talking about?
I've got Home and Tulare, Home and Visalia, two in Sacramento.
I meant the ones with the ordinance that you're talking about, one or more rental?
That's in Sacramento.
Sacramento, okay. That was one I was familiar with, yeah.
Well, we also have it in, I'm sorry, not in Chelie, Chilene, I'm sorry. It's not the case.
But yeah, I'm researching other cities, what they've done because that's an idea that's come to light. And we are looking at that. Somebody asked earlier, what are we doing? Well, I've got a few things and a few balls in the air, but they're not ready. They have to be vetted, they have to be studied, they have to see if they're appropriate. And then I've got to get through this process, and then I can go on to the next one. And that's, it is part of my plan. I'm sharing that with you. It's, again, not publicly ready to go, but we have heard you. We have heard that this is a small part of the problem. There's other issues. We're looking at ways to address it, getting a little creative, frankly, pushing the envelope a little bit, but we're just not ready to air it publicly.
Okay, well, all I'm saying is other cities have come up with solutions, and I think we need to reach out to those.
I'm definitely doing that, just haven't been able to complete the process.
Okay, and also, just so you know, I go down to code compliance by, excuse me, I go to code compliance, try to go once a month with five. I take my issues seriously and I try to register five code compliances a month. And I don't do for parking, people parking over driveways, I don't do anything. I do for people living in their, in their garages where they've got them converted into bedrooms. We now have one on College Street that he's now put a fireplace in, or not a fireplace, they've got a heater in the middle of their garage, and they're now sleeping so many people. And they also have tents in their backyard that they're sleeping. And this has been ongoing, and it's been turned in numerous times. So I understand the problem. I also don't understand why when our police officers are going out to locations where they can see those items, that we don't have them be able to at least inform our city of some of this information. It's, I just, we've got, we've got the fire department coming to one of the homes in the neighborhood on a regular basis in legitimate reasons. It is a, it is a board and care home, and there are legitimate reasons. But they also are out of code compliance. I mean, there are huge issues there. And I have to be the one to turn it in. And I just don't think that's correct. And the answer I always get is, we know we're so overloaded. And that's the answer. And we start placing some cost to landlords. And believe me, I don't want an extra cost, but it does make a difference. And I think our city, I think after living here this many years, that this community deserves that.
Thank you. And we do get referrals from police and fire when they go out and they see something. But it's kind of on the discretion of the officers, and I don't know if they're trained to do that or not, but we do get referrals periodically.
Hello, everybody. Personally, myself, you know, if I were to have an H two A house next to my residence, you know, before judging the employee, I would, you know, get to know him, talk to them, talk to the employer, and, you know, and understand that the workers from Mexico, they come to live the American dream, which is tough, very tough. At the same time, I think there's bigger issues in Santa Maria. Too short for this. I think there's bigger issues in Santa Maria. You know, for example, a lot of gangs out here, very bad. Drugs, bad. You know, you see, I'm pretty sure everybody has a neighbor that's up to no good. You kind of got to be careful with that person. So I think H two A, the H two A program is very good, you know, especially because you heard a lot of people saying that agriculture's dying down or the people that live here don't want to work no more. And, you know, that the crops go, you spend money to grow crops and it doesn't get harvested. Pretty much, you know, you don't get your money back or you lose out. So, you know, my personal opinion, I think that, you know, hopefully, there's like, whatever the outcome is, you guys think about it, you know. I don't know, you know, it's just very tough, I guess you could say, you know. It's a very tough situation, especially because, you know, when you think about it, there's a lot of stuff going on out here that's probably more important. You know, personally, myself, I think as a community, you should worry more about the youth, you know, getting themselves into drugs, into gangs. And, you know, because at the end of the day, the H two A workers, they do contribute to the community. They work, they, you know, they mostly probably pay taxes at the end of the year like any normal individual. And I'm sure that the state, city, Santa Maria gets a cut out of it. So just my personal opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. We are working on those issues. There's a lot of issues we have on our plate that we're trying to address.
Hi, my name's Tom McMahon. I'm a landlord here. I'm kind of an okay landlord, not quite. But that's okay, and actually.
You're trying.
Yeah, and we spoke a little bit, and she touched, the landlord touched on it. What we've discussed is that anybody can become a landlord. And, you know, it takes, it takes no, basically, we're not regulated. And as a result, we abuse the situation. There's much to be said for setting aside the H two A issue and looking at the whole issue of regulating and setting the standards for anyone who lays claim to being a landlord that is collecting rent. Well, then there's certain obligations, you know, responsibilities you have to the community. And she's right, she's right on points to a great extent. And gentlemen who's concerned about their neighborhood is, if you, if you have ten H two A workers in the house next to you, your chances are you're going to have very few cars. If you have ten schmucks with a schmuck landlord, like me, who lives on the other side of town and is like, oh, just go, you know, talk to the police or whatever. And I'm not quite that bad, but you know what I'm saying? Is if that's what you have, then you're going to have twenty cars because each of them's going to have a broken car and a good car. And this is real life, and it's not meant as a joke. It's a, and that landlord's going to be just shrug their shoulder and say, well, there's nothing regulating me. Whereas in some communities, they wouldn't put up with that. They'd haul in the landlord and hold him accountable and say, you know, your property is crap or whatever. And like I say, I'm going to see minus or whatever, we talked about. Okay, but anyway, okay, so the other issue is, I wonder if you could invite a grower association or a grower up here and ask the question. Because common was made, and they've all made their commitments. They know how many strawberry plants they're going to be planting and when, what date, you know. They have this dialed in. So they must know how many H two A workers they're going to be drawing into this community next spring. And I wonder if you can invite them, lay out the number of twenty eighteen, and then how many in twenty nineteen? They must know that. That's how they plan. They're excellent business people. And that's up to you to ask and up to them to answer.
I would welcome their free exchange of information if they are willing to provide that. That would be useful. My turn. Should I sit down?
Everybody had a fastened seat belts here. I feel.
I feel that we kind of got off on a tangent here with Mr. Corona's deal, he's, he's, I, I want to be sensitive to what he's got to say and what he's mentioned to us. I feel that we're the only ones that he can go to, meaning city officials, police, fire, whoever. But it's really not why we're here. We're here for the issue of the H2A. And Mr. Corona kind of brought it up a little bit, he alluded to it, and he says, man, I, I've never seen the city go so fast in anything. And then this gentleman over here, Carlos, says he's concerned about pushing us through so quickly. And, and, and no disrespect to the people that did this, this thing here, but even, even your presentation, he said, well, I left a word out here, and so, so, we're, we're moving at lightning speed in spite of the fact that she would like us to have done this two months ago. So, it's concerning to me that, that, that we're doing that. That's my comment. Now, my questions. You're going to send a notice out to all the people within three hundred feet of the intended H2A home, is that correct? Employee housing?
Yeah.
Okay. If, if a complaint is going to be filed, or an objection is going to be filed, can it only be filed by those people within that three hundred foot circumference, or can it be filed by anyone? So, so if it's in the five hundred block of Eastern Araposa, somebody living down in Bauer Estates can come and say, well, I want that there.
Yes.
And that's true for any condition?
Yeah, I was going to say that, that's the story.
Actually, I was aware of that, but I didn't know who else was. The other thing, the other thing I have is that if, if my memory serves me right, and if you need to correct me, please do, or if anybody else wants to correct me. Seems that me, when we came, when they came to the council last year, there were some people sitting in the front row, and said, well, what do we do? We've got people coming next week, and we've already got this planned out, and we, we, then we passed that ordinance, and we were Johnny on the spot, we did it, we did an emergency ordinance that ended up dying on the vine. So, I just, I don't want to move faster than we have to, yet I want to move as fast as we can, and that's probably a delicate balance, but what are we going to do for the people? And somebody alluded to this earlier. The, last year, when they said, well, we've already got money out, and we said, well, I think it was you that said, well, we're going to just, you know, we understand that, we anticipated that, we're just going to give you a, some grace period after this, and you go ahead with your project, and we're not going to make you have to pay something that's exorbitant. So, you were going to kind of give them an extension if they were already kind of in the lane. So, when somebody addressed that question, I would assume we probably would fall back on that same kind of logic and suggest that somewhere along the line, we're going to draw, get to an end, and then these people can think a year in ahead and decide what, what they, what they're going to have to deal with. Another question. When they laid it out for us, they said, well, we got to do this, and we're going to do this, and then we have to, in forty-five days, we can do this, and then we have to, but we only get so much time. All of this stuff here, does that fit in that time zone? And why am I concerned about it? Because this is the single strongest economic engine we have. So, why, I think we need to know whether or not what we're developing is going to fit, or they're going to be able to make it fit in the framework of what they have to be forced to deal with. Because I'm sure some of these people don't really want to do that, but they've only got so much time to do the things that they, they, they have to do. And the plants aren't going to, you can't put them on hold and say, well, we'll pick this fruit in two weeks, it's today, or you lose it. So, so I'm a little concerned about that, and if, and if, I heard somebody say that they've had no input into what this is written up here, and I'm, and I just hate to make that mistake again. I think that we need to find out exactly what their time periods are, and what their demands are placed on, on the growers, because of the limitations that they have to work within. And we need to protect this most valuable commodity that we have, one in the world, and I just question whether we're really are ready. That's my feeling, and I hope that, I hope that we are, because if we're not, we'll be, we'll be here next year having, having town hall meetings number two, because of something that we didn't get done right the first time. So, I, I'm a little concerned, and, I'm glad you mentioned the substance, that's another, the other one, the substance of the, of the objection. That we can't just go into the room and say, well, I'm meeting with Mr. Chung here, and I, I just don't want it, end of story, that's it. I mean, you got to have more than that, right?
Absolutely.
You got to have something articulable that says that they had this last year, and they were building campfires out next to my fence, or something like that. But, because if it goes through, I mean, you want these people to enjoy a healthy, thriving business, because that makes for healthy, thriving taxes, and we like taxes. So, having said all that, I hope that we are not jumping the gun. I, I want to be real cautious and careful that we only do this once. The, the money that you decide that they're going to pay for the permits, for the conditional use permit, whatever that decision is, you only pay that once, right?
Yes, and the permits would be ongoing.
They're going perpetually unless they change
Unless the use changes, yeah, or it's abandoned. It's like any other city.
It's a one-shot thing for, for these folks, they don't have to pay an annual thing, kind of like you.
Right, the HCD permits are annual, but our zoning administered permit would be, essentially run with only
Okay. I think that's it, but if I have anything else, I'll call you.
Please feel free. I do want to address, just because of the staff proposing an ordinance doesn't mean the council has to adopt it. The council can send it back for further study, can ask us to, you know, we're, we're more than happy to do that, we're just, that will be one of the options, and the staff report, one of the alternatives will be direct staff to further study the ordinance and bring it back in six months or whatever. So, if that's a concern, there's no reason to, I mean, I, I personally don't feel that there's any reason to slow the train down unless the council feels that more study is required. I, I believe that the issue is fairly clear, this is a logical result of what we've heard at these meetings. It's, it's always been in the back of my mind, and I've shared it with stakeholders all along the way, that this is probably staff's recommendation, because it makes the most sense, it balances the interests, to the extent it can be balanced. And like I said, there's some people that don't want any regulations at all, and then there's people that want absolutely none, no, just, no, no, no H2A at all. So, staff has tried to, to strike a balance, but it's ultimately up to the council to decide if we've done that, and if we need to go back to the drawing board. Believe me, I don't think anyone would be happier than myself, or Ryan Hospital, or our finance division manager, if we had more chance to work on this, I think we'd be happy. But we made a promise to the council when this came up, that we were going to deliver something by the end of the year, and we're trying to hold to our promise. So, you guys are my boss, so whatever you want, you can get.
Follow up.
Could come down? Another person, thank you.
Again.
Oh. I'm sorry, everyone else has to know.
Okay, I just want to share it briefly, and, as far as I understand, and I just want to advise you that I don't want nobody to be offended. So, hay muchas opiniones, que verdaderamente deberemos de pensar una cosa. There are various opinions, but all I do suggest, just to think of one thing. I just want you to be conscious that who, who we are, and where we came from, because we had our ancestors came from another country. And we also want to, want you to be aware that we need some education for those that barely come to this country. I am the first generation, and my children were born here, and I'm sure that many of you do have concerns about how to take care of the future generations. So, I want all the community to become united and really focused, and want you to see that there is a, a lot of attacks for these employees program. Want you to be aware that these workers, because workers come here and work hard and put the food on their table. So, I want you to know that it is important to protect those workers, because of them, we have our food on the table, and if we don't, then the cost of these products that they work on here is going to be high. So, hopefully, the food that we're eating right now is cheap enough, and it, we don't allow for the cost to increase in the future.
Thank you.
Well, I promise I wasn't planning on talking, but I was.
Yeah, I thought we talked about this.
We did, we did. My name is Laura Brown, I'm with the California Strawberry Commission. So, this is statewide representation of all of California's growers, shippers, and processors, and the city was kind enough to invite myself and a local colleague here, Claire Wyman, from the Grower Shipper, to present at the last public meeting, which was two weeks ago. And, and during that time, I presented a timeline about what all goes into farmers preparing to grow for any given year. And it's a very long, intensive process, and a lot of important decisions are made very early on in this planning process. And so, I think as we're, this does feel rushed. It feels very rushed, and the, the public meetings began in June, and so we've had this kind of leisurely public meeting process. The issue arose at the first council meeting, and Cheryl, when was that?
January.
January. So, we're talking, and now we are on the verge of December, and now we're in a very time-sensitive time for growers as far as securing housing for their H2A workers. Stakeholders have been told that they can participate after this conditional use permit process is passed. Afterwards, we can then get together as a group and talk about how agriculture can interface with the city and the housing permits. But it feels like we're hurrying up, because we had the emergency ordinance, we hurried through that, and then we're waiting, and we're going through the public process, and now it feels like we're hurrying it up again. And so, my ask is that we have a very fair and equitable process in how we evaluate whatever this conditional use permit will look like. So, thank you.
Hello, my name's Steve. I, it seems to me like this ordinance is going to be coming at us one way or another, depending on how it gets passed. But my question is, you know, how is staff going to be reviewing conditional use permits? What's their criteria for approval or denial? It's, it seems like, you know, from the public comments, that everyone's concerned of, you know, there's a, a big group of men next door to me, or my, my kids are playing, and it's, it's fear. So, you know, that is, is the grounds for denying a conditional use permit, because somebody ever has fear or the, the unknown? I've, I've been trying to do a lot of research for days on the internet, trying to find crimes committed by H2A farmworkers, and I really haven't been able to find it. There have been some identities left with, you know, shrimp farmers in Texas, or melan people in Georgia, but I, I can't find any real crimes. So, you know, I'm just curious what, what, what the criteria that they'll be looking at for approval or denial, because, you know, we're focusing on the ordinance, which way it's going to slip through, but what is actually going to, how's it going to be seen by the, or reviewed by the city?
Thank you for that question, Steve. I will answer the legal aspects, and then I will pass it to Chung for a more practical response. In order to approve or deny conditional use permit, there has to be findings that are supported by substantial evidence, okay? A vague fear of ten men in a house is not going to cut it, let's face it, that is not going to survive that sort of thing. There could be, I, I don't want to speculate, because you know, each case is different, but there could be some situations where a particular proposal does have some concerns, for whatever reason, and you can point to those and say, here, this is not a good use, it, it really is too dense. Maybe there's a lot of space, but not a lot of, I mean, a lot of rooms, but not a lot of space, you know, in the lot, and maybe it's just not appropriate to fit, or something. I, I don't want to speculate or point to that right now, because we don't know. My feeling is based on what I've heard, and based on, you know, you're absolutely right, we don't have any issues with the H2A housing from the code compliance or law enforcement perspective. It's going to be rather difficult, I think, to find legal basis to deny these if the permits are processed. That may not be welcome news to a lot of the neighborhood, but the process is really intended to make sure that the actors are good actors, and that they do what they say they're going to do, and that they're in full compliance. And then, if something goes wrong, the permit can be pulled, and that's very powerful. That's the protection that is being offered to the concerned residents. But as far as denying these, I don't see a lot of denials based on the, the type of H2A housing that we've seen in the city. I just think that's, that's how it would play out, should the city councils adopt an ordinance like that now. I'd like Chung to answer that from a practical point of view.
My response is probably not that different from Phil's. In the world of planning and land use, there's essentially three types of, three categories that use is followed. It's either permitted, meaning it's allowed, or it's prohibited, meaning it's not allowed, or it's conditional. And conditional is somewhere in between permitted and not permitted. And there's a reason why there's a category for conditional, because it, there's an exercise in discretion, and there's an exercise in judgment, and there's an opportunity for the public to come out and provide input. And sometimes those decisions are based on some input, and it's based on a review of the site plan, the floor plan, and so it's hard to say what exactly, and how those decisions are going to be made, because it may depend on the application, it depends on the submittal. But there's a reason why it's conditional, it's because it's, it's in that gray area.
Thank you, Chung.
I'd just like to comment on that. We are already regulated by the state. The neighbors have a problem where if we added more people to the house than we should have, people are going to call, can't call an eight hundred number, complain, and they'll come and re-inspect us, and pull the permitting files already. So, that's already in place. It can't be bettered, just thought I'd comment that.
Thank you, yeah, that's a good point. And we got twenty more minutes before I let any of you go, so.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Felipe Mendoza, I'm living here, Carol. You guys talking so much about H2A, and I understand all, okay? The problem is, I'm complaining about what I, what happened to us. I had my house for retirement, and now I have a lot of different people in there. I don't complain against them, I complain about, against the people take care of us and doesn't look for another place to put in all these people, and a place, you know, to live with everything. Like, we talking a few times back, and planning community is supposed to find a place, you know, with the farmers. Farmers talking, they want the business, I understand. the farmers, farmers talking, they want the business, I understand, you know, they need money, you guys need money, I need money too, but the only thing I complain is because I don't feel happy to have so many people around, you know, because I don't know nobody. I tried, I talked to the owners before, and we agreed and signed it, okay, but now you guys mean change everything, I talked in the first meetings, when we came over here, about this problem, then you guys say they want to hold this project for 10 months, two weeks later, when we went over there, they start to put people in, nobody knows, just bunch of people there, we don't say nothing, because we not try to go in the right direction, but what I see, you guys don't do nothing for us, you guys have to do something for us to, not just collect the money because they pay, you guys putting these people in a good place, I told you before too, I put time for free to help you guys to build something, I don't mind, you know, but at the same time, I had to take care of my family too. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to ask a question or make a comment?
Forgot to ask you a question earlier.
I was going to say, you already made your comment.
Yeah, sorry, sorry, so, this is a question, it really is, so Phil, I, I'd like to know, of the H2A housing that's been here for the past five-plus years, how many police calls have you received on those homes?
Well, I, I don't get those calls, so zero.
How many of the city's?
Your question.
It's going to be the same answer.
Yeah, it's the same answer, I have, I, I'm unaware of any calls to the police.
Okay, so just to make sure that you guys heard that, there, there's zero phone calls about any issues at H2A housing, so I, I think it's a very important point to understand, so the concerned citizens of our community, that want to clean up our community, should be cheerleading this program.
I'll go one step further, Carlos, we've had, you own one of the houses, in fact, that you purchased for H2A housing, some on, you know, Orange Street, I could be wrong about the address, but it was a code compliance problem, required it, and we've not had a single violation since, your story's not unique, I, I certainly applaud the people who house H2A workers, there is, there is quality, and there's concern, and a high standard.
Thank you, and I appreciate you pointing that out, and on that property, there was 18 code compliance issues before I purchased it, since we purchased it, and use it for H2A, goose egg, and so I, I think we have model citizens that are interviewed, not only by us, that are interviewed by our U.S. consulate, this, I, I invite you to tell me if you have a neighbor, or, or the landlords have a house where you know exactly who's in your house, and then these houses, we have posted, it's X amount of people, it's been in, as, as Mr. Cronin mentioned, it's been inspected, only X amount of people can be there, not one more, or we get barred from the program, that's all of the program, so, i- if we screw up in one house, we lose it all, so my bigger concern's not about me, I could care less about the house in Norwich, it's not, it's not about me, this community is an agricultural community, and so if we hurt this program, we're hurting our community, and so for those of us that want, that are frustrated with the cleaning up of San Maria, I guarantee you, I, I put my life on it, it, H2A is not causing those concerns that were mentioned here today, this is the program that is cleaning up your city, so, I, I think that we have to have that in consideration, so, the reason why, and I, and Phil, you and I get along great, the reason that, that you've, you've sensed frustration for me is, I, I think that when the very first meeting started, a year ago, or, or almost a year ago, we were promised to be at the table, to have a conversation on how to form this, so now we get something stuffed down our throat, that's going to planning next week, that's going to the city council, they're following, and I'm still looking for the smoking gun, so I, I, I don't understand what happened, where the breaking communication was, because I, I'd love to have the same thing, Nipomo happened in San Luis County, that was tragic, that was horrific, that was something that should never happen to any community on the planet, and yet, the county of San Luis Obispo has taken their time to have a conversation, to go through discovery, to bring stakeholders in, concerned community members, agriculturists, and come out with something that works, and it's almost there, it still hasn't been released, but it's been very thoughtful process. You guys put this thing out in January, and it was mud on your face, it was, it was emergency ordinance, and then it just like, let's remove it, we screwed up there, and I feel we're going down the same path again, and so I just caution that, that if we can have a conversation, and we can accept that the plants are in the ground, seed has been purchased, contracts have been signed, 2019 is, is already here, in, in the agricultural industry, it's, that's already here and it's committed, we're, we're already committed for 2019, so I think that we need to understand, the community needs to understand, if there is going to be anything, it's going to be applied in 2020, otherwise, there's going to be some huge issues, a lot bigger than this, coming down the pipeline, and so, I think that, that agriculture is owed that, I think we, we, we could have a conversation and continue to fix this, and apply it mid-year, next year, plenty of time, so no one says, I didn't know, I already bought my plants, then you could start talking about 2020, so I think we're all in for coming with, up with a solution, but we're asking for a seat at the table, thank you.
Thank you, I just wanted to say one thing, or, actually, I want to say several things, one is that I don't believe that was a screw-up in urgency ordinance, I disagree with that characterization, I think the process worked exactly how it's supposed to, there were legitimate concerns that were brought to the city's attention, unknown facts, there was definitely, excuse me, I know, there was facts that were known, some of them were not substantiated later, seemed that quick action was appropriate, the, the process is supposed to provide a cooling off period, 45 days to create something for study, and then if there's still need for study, you can extend it, after the first 45, well, after the first couple of weeks, it was clear that there wasn't a sense of urgency that was originally believed, or, uh, thought, and so the council wisely decided not to extend the urgency ordinance, that is not screwing up, that's exactly how the process is supposed to work, so I don't like that characterization, that said, I understand your sense that there's some urgency here, the urgency is not, is not necessary, council is perfectly free to extend this, or if they feel that there has been enough time, there's, the issue's not, as I put it earlier, rocket science, they can make a decision, or they can say, you know what, we really don't need to do this right now, we're satisfied that there's time, and, and as far as the meetings with stakeholders, we are going to be moving forward with respect to those bigger picture items, the commercial and industrial areas, the, the development, the general plan review, all that stuff, you guys are going to be, we're going to be doing what San Luis did with that, this process was like a focus incident, is a, a little bit of a fire that needed to be handled, so I, I apologize if there's a sense of rush, but there's no necess, there's not, there's no necessity that it, it be taken effect immediately, and I'm sure the council can take current contracts into account like they did before, they can delay the implementation of the ordinance for six months, so that people have plenty of notice that it's going to take effect, they can delay adoption of it all, or, we can grandfather existing contracts, and then, or retroactively allow the conditional use permits for existing, staff is more than happy to work with, and is never intent to harm anything about the economic engine that agriculture is, just be clear about that.
You know, you guys all talk about farmers, how important they are, and we've discussed it, my family, my dad, 75, no, he's going to be 80, take that back, retired three years ago from the field, so I'm, you know, what we were more worried about when we started this, was neighborhoods are supposed to be for families, when you get all the guys in there, and I know you guys, you know, my husband worked the circuit and everything, but I'm saying, when you have a neighborhood, like our neighborhood, we built our houses, and we had a fight to get our houses, we knew everybody on the street, we all watched kids grow up, that's what fa, that's what we were fighting for, for neighborhoods, we, we know the farmers need their workers, I'm not, I'm the first to say they do, and they work hard, believe me, but, when the, if you start alienate, alienating the homeowners, I know a few people that were thinking about moving back home, they were, they're in the service, and they were thinking about coming back home, until they found out, or they can have the, you know, they said, forget it, they're, they just moved to Colorado, so, you know, it's not that we don't want the workers, we want to have the neighborhood, like we, when you buy a house, you want neighbors that you know, and it's going to be there year after year after year, even renters, they're there year after year, most of them, not all of them, and you're not, you might not get the right neighbors when you, they buy, you can get bad ones also, but they're there, you know who they are, and yes, we know the owners, and like I said, it's not that we don't want, they need to be here, but not in our neighborhoods, and like I said, we're, we're, we're not happy with that, but we know, we're not going to get everything we want, that, nobody's going to get everything we want, and we've been discussing this for almost a year, so it's not a surprise, and I, like I said, last time, if I had known how the city feels about the homeowners, I would have raised my kids here, and I grew up here, I came when I was one, so I'm as close, but I would not have raised my kids here, because the homeowners are not valued.
Well, you had me until that last part, I disagree with you respectfully.
That's how I feel.
I understand how you feel, and I don't, just, discount your feelings, I, I'm sorry to feel that way, because I feel that we do value the homeowners, I think that's why we have a vigorous code enforcement program, and we address concerns, I, I really do believe we care about that, so, that's just my main message. Phil, maybe John could get this, or have better, but the, the, can you come up, John, with some sort of a, like an off-the-cuff answer on the percentages that we're talking about, H2A versus single-family dwellings that we have in the community, because, relatively speaking, I, I don't know, I think that the percentage is very, very low, and for somebody to think that they're not valued, I, I, I find some issue with that, and there's, relatively speaking, got to be just a sprinkle of, of H2A structures versus the single-family dwellings that are owned or rentals, that's just kind of my take on it, can you answer that? The stat we had was about 1,900 workers in 2016, I think it's gotten probably a little higher, because it was a logarithmic, a logarithmic growth pattern, so I think we're probably over 2,000, about, almost half of them were housed in the hotels, so if we assume that, about 1,000, there's, I think there was between, in 2016, I think there was about 75 houses that were used, now, that doesn't count the R3, 75 in the R1 and R2 that housed H2A workers, I don't know, Zen, how many, but assuming about eight or so, that is a small sprinkling of the total number. But in fairness, like, the number you're looking for is 10% of the problem, you're asking for the H2A number, but really what you should be asking for is the, is the overall worker number, which is what the ordinance is talking about, and that number then exponentially gets, you know, gets 10 times bigger than the number you were asking. But the only reason that these, of course, design was to, to address the H2A issue. We already know, and we understand the problem that the Corona's going through, and, and, and he's not, he's not getting the satisfaction that he would like, I could tell just his body language up here, if we were here, he'd punch you, but, 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 and I don't, and I don't blame him.
I picked that up.
I don't, I don't blame him for, for being upset, I've been listening to the same complaint for years and years and years, but, we, 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 we can't, I think we're confusing ourselves if we keep throwing the two issues together, meaning, meaning what Mr. Corona is saying, that his situation isn't getting better, and this isn't going to do anything for him, but that's all we have to work with, is this H2A, and with, with Cheryl's issue, is that, well, at least you know who your neighbor is, you know better who these people are, they, they, they get fingerprinted, they're, they have their names, that, they, it's all there, we don't, we don't get, when I, when I bought my house, I don't remember taking any fingerprints, having to go around and tell people who I was, these people have to do, they have to report to their bosses who they are, now, that doesn't mean that they report to you as a neighbor, but they report, somebody has the answers that you're asking.
Steve, can I say something before?
Yeah, we just hand up and, turn the mic, because we're recording this, we don't really hear you otherwise.
Well, when this all started, I first called the city, nobody knew anything about what an H2A was, or anything. Because I called to ask what an H2A, what the rules are, da-da-da, I started at the planning, because I didn't know where to go, then I went to COWs, then I went to the mayor's office, then I went to the city council, I called one of the secretaries, and they sent me back to COWs, and then, so, that's how this all got started, I think if we had known ahead of time what it was all, it went to God, as far as it has.
Well, I've answered that question for you before, and the fact, but the fact, the fact that, the fact that you didn't know, that we, some people didn't know anything about it, is a testament to that there's not a problem, if, 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 if the calls for service are not there, law enforcement-wise, then what's the problem? You, you see, I, I-
I understand, you've got to see our problem too, we, we want, we want, in neighborhoods, we want families, if they're all, you know, that's what neighborhood, that's why we all bought our houses, we want a community.
Can I interject, so?
Yes.
I, I, I think what you're trying to say, I, I want to say two things about your comments, because you said it several times, one is that, we, we call it single-family neighborhoods, but that family is not really descriptive anymore, it evokes images of kids and Little League and all that stuff, as far as the law and planning is concerned, that is gone, a family is, what we recall, something more like a single housekeeping unit, and it can be comprised of a number of different arrangements, including a group dwelling, like a sober living facility, transitional housing, all these new living types of arrangements that are different, they're all perfectly legal and encouraged in single-family neighborhoods under state law, so our hands are tied to some extent, so it's really not a realistic expectation to say, single-family neighborhoods are for single families, because we can't really require that, we can't legislate that, that said, there is something qualitatively different between even a group dwelling, and people like are transitioning from homelessness or so, homelessness into housing, or sobriety, or addiction to sobriety, there's a qualitative difference between people who are residents of the city year-round, and people who are here are only for an extended stay, and I think that's the point you're trying to get at.
Yeah, that's what I'm-
So I, I just, that's why I interrupted you, is I, I know where you're going, and the law recognizes that difference, that is what enables us to legislate in this area, is that it's not the occupancy issue.
No.
I mean, if it wasn't for that statute that said six or fewer is a single-family use, we could literally ban H2A housing in neighborhoods, now, I'm not saying we should or would, but I'm just saying, it's because of that that we're stuck on the number seven, but it's the, it's the type of use it is that we're regulating, just wanted to clarify that, because that's kind of a subtle point. Are we done? We got two more minutes. All right, well, I feel like this is a journey, like the end of the first leg of a long journey that we're taking together, and I, I really have seen a lot of familiar faces here and come out, I, I really admire you for that, I mean, I sort of paid to do this, so, you know, it's kind of easy for me, but you folks are taking time to do this, and I really want to thank you for your exercising your civic responsibilities, I hope these have been educational, I hope that they serve their purpose, and let's do it again next year, just a second, thank you and good night.